Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call the reorganization meeting of the Board of Education to order Tuesday, July 3, 2018, at the Education Center. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to administer the oath of office to our re-elected Board Trustee, Kristi Lorenzo, and newly-elected Board Trustee, Dawn Talber. Mr. Anderson sends his regrets for his absence this evening and will take the oath of office in the superintendent's office within the next couple of weeks. So if you could please grab the oaths I left at your table, Mrs. Anderson. Stand and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support--
I do solemnly swear that I will support-- Wait, sorry. You have to go together.
I thought there wasn't a test.
This isn't brain surgery.
You're not the president, you can't tell us.
I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Trustee of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is election of officers, in particular, the nomination for Board President. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Hubert.
I second that.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? Would the Board please motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. John Hubert has been nominated for the Office of President of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. Congratulations.
By now, you can tell us what to say.
And I will now-- John, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability. Here we go. Yeah.
Those of you--
Now, where are we?
We're now at the nomination and election for Vice President of the Board of Education.
All right. I would like to now open the floor for nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dan Esrati.
Second.
There are any-- It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the nomination, I guess?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? Could the Board please motion to close nominations?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, Dan Esrati is Vice President?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. You've been nominated for the Office of Board of Education as Vice President of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. Congratulations. Could you--
I do solemnly swear--
Raise your right hand.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can-- You can now sit where you were sitting. The oath of--
Superintendent.
Office for the Superintendent of Schools. Please rise, raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yay!
Here we are again. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of school officials?
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We'll now have the oath of office for the District Clerk. Please rise, raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Leah. There we are. Now, the oath of office for our 2018-19 Board of Education student representatives. Please rise and--
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of-- Board Trustee of Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are glad to have you. Do I have a motion to approve the other appointment of school attorneys, external auditors?
Motion.
Blah, blah.
Second.
Am I allowed to say that, blah, blah? No. Do I have to read them all?
Every last one? No.
As per--
As per the agenda. We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They have been appointed. Do I have an approval of the impartial hearing officer rotational list for the 2018-19 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Education pursuant to 2000, what, 200.5, the regulations of the Commissioner of Education delegates the President of the Board of Education as the representative of the Board who can appoint an impartial hearing officer in the event such a hearing is requested by the parent of a student with a disability. All those in favor? Oh, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to designate the official depositories of funds as in the agenda.
Motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve authorizations as in 3.15 of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The authorizations have been approved. The approval of the resolution regarding all policies of the Board of Education as in 3.16 of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting and convene into regular session?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We are now in the regular session of the 2018-July 3 reorganization meeting. The mission statement: "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have a public discussion now, a public hearing on the 2018-19 updates to the Code of Conduct. Is there anyone from the public here who wishes to speak on the revised Code of Conduct, the draft?
No.
No. Do I have a motion to approve the Code of Conduct 2018-19?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the Code of Conduct has been carried. Do we have any questions or comments from interested citizens?
No.
No. Do we have an update on questions or comments from interested citizens from you?
No. There is no updates. Everything has been updated in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
And if nobody talks at these meetings, then I can't give you an update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13, 2018, and the Facilities Committee minutes for the 2017-18 school year?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried. Motion to approve the establishment of the Board of Education Committees Audit Policy and Facilities and Other Assignments.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the 2018-19 Professional Development Plan.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any comments, questions on the development plan? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve textbooks as in 13.1 of your agenda.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Stace, you got Billa. You're on that one.
He's busy.
Second.
Sorry. You moved so fast, I didn't know. I kind of lost track.
Any questions on this?
Just one.
Yes.
Still no course, Algebra II?
No Algebra II yet.
Textbook.
We're working on it. We're chipping away.
Please, please. Thank you.
No problem. These books do come with online access?
Thank you.
Awesome.
I assume at this point--
Yeah.
Everything comes online.
Six years.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Personnel.
We have a number of items for you to consider for approval tonight. Prior to that, we do have a number of teacher candidates and administrative candidates in the audience. I think there are three or four of them. So if you could just stand and let us know who you are and what your assignment is, that would be fantastic.
Hello, my name is Ayesha Garcia. I will be the new general music and chorus teacher at Sapphire Elementary School and High Tree Elementary School. I'm very excited to start working and I look forward to working in this school district.
Yay!
My name is Caitlin Mandell. I will be in Central Valley Elementary as a special education teacher. I'm very excited to be here.
My name is Kevin Solomon. I'll be Assistant Principal of the Middle School and I'm very excited to be part of the Monroe Woodbury Education School Year. It's a great meeting, everybody.
My name is Andy Santos. I will be a special education teacher at Central Valley. I'm thankful for this opportunity and I'm very excited to be in Monroe Woodbury.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I would respectfully request approval for the items listed on your personnel.
Motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried of personnel. Congratulations, everybody. Motion to approve the resolution for stipulation of settlement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hello?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm hard of hearing you speak up. Opposed? So carried. Business and Financial, Patrick.
So, John, before we actually approve the items in business financial, I just wanted to quickly give everyone an update on our expedited capital project. And we have with us tonight Eric Boe, civil engineer with Land Associates, who's going to talk about that a little bit. But I had sent the Board an email on Friday. I'm just going to read a couple of excerpts from that.
Please.
So as you know, the Facilities Committee, in conjunction with our architects, land, have been working to put together an expedited capital project. So it's a fast-track capital project. We're trying to do a multitude of things in less than a year, or about a year. So one of the things we wanted to address was the longstanding issues and problems with our athletic fields. So in past years, these problems have been exacerbated by new teams, overuse or liberal use by the community groups, and the DOT project and the loss of a field in front of CB, and the impact to the south of the property as well.
Patrick, can I just interrupt? Can you move the mic closer to you?
Sure.
Because I don't know if everybody can hear you.
Absolutely. So the original concept was a single multipurpose turf field on Field Number Three, which is our football field. We quickly realized that because we were going to be working that area, expanding the track made sense. We have a six-lane track. We decided that we needed an eight-lane track. The track has passed its useful life. In addition to the track project, we're also talking about replacing the cooling tower at the high school and the chillers, which essentially is the air conditioning system in the building. So the original concept was a turf field outside, some work on the HVAC system in the high school. But with that, we realized we may need an additional field that would accommodate soccer, baseball, and softball. And we came up with what we felt like was a good solution to that. So as the scope grew, you know, the financing of the project also grew. But we're at a point where I feel that we can cover this with our DOT money, which was part of the eminent domain process with the Department of Transportation, the recent money that we've been promised from Assemblyman Scoofus, additional state aid, and our capital reserve at this point. So the timeline is, as I said, expedited. It's a fast-track project. We're shooting to have the Board vote on this at the August meeting and authorize a proposition that would go before the voters in late September. The voters need to authorize this, even though we're not borrowing, we're not bonding, we're actually using existing funds. So little or no impact, no impact really, to the taxpayers. And as I've said in the past, by linking the projects together, we're able to make the entire thing eligible for building aid. Normally, fields like this would not be on their own eligible for building aid. So it's the smart way to do it. We're trying to do it very quickly. I left on the, or Leah rather, did on the agenda, a resolution for a seeker resolution to declare us as lead agency. And so the seeker is State Environmental Quality Review Act. We have to go through a process where we analyze the environmental impact of any kind of work we do. We initially looked at this and said, well, there's little or no impact. But we've looked at it again, and as the scope grew, we realized that as part of a larger plan, which we had a larger master plan, we had to consider the entire impact of the master plan. And so it's going to take us a bit longer. We started the secret process, but that's what the resolution that's before the Board tonight would do, declare us as lead agency. And also in there, it talks about the scope of the entire plan. And Eric's going to talk about the athletic field master plan, and then we'll call it Phase One, which is the improvements to the high school and the two turf fields. So that's sort of the broad overview. Don, I don't know if you, as a Facilities Committee, want to add anything?
Can you just add, I know you mentioned that this has been, we're trying to do this relatively quickly, but this has been a process for about three years.
It has been.
Okay. I think everybody needs to know that this has been, we've been looking at this with all the different projects that were going on, trying to time it appropriately, but this has been something that the district has been working on for at least three years.
Right. I think the difference is, Elsie, it was, we were thinking it would be part of the larger, the really large, plan. And what we thought with the DOT money, the impact of the DOT construction project on our property, the additional teams, you know, the pressure on the fields, we thought we could carve this out. And as I said in my email, do it sooner rather than later. And we, you know, we have the money to do it without the borrowing, which simplifies everything. And if we link it all together, we get a lot of building aid, a lot more building aid.
Could you tell us what the building aid would be and how it is paid back to us, how it is paid out?
Yeah. The building aid, it would be approximately 60% of the cost. So for every dollar we spend, we would get 60 cents back. And in this kind of project, it would be over a 15-year period. And they compute the building aid as if we borrowed. So although we're paying cash for this, we would get back money over 15 years in building aid as though it were, we had borrowed.
Basically, we'd get that 60% of what we spent.
Yes. Yep.
And what we spend is already there, or, you know, has been here, Mark, for the facility.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thanks. So it's kind of, again, it's dealing with, and I like, I've put it this way many times, it's dealing with a problem, right? It's a longstanding problem. I think almost the third, like, as soon as I got here, I was hearing about the problem, and the problem has only gotten worse. So we decided, let's try to act, let's do it quickly, and solve, you know, one piece of our capital project needs.
I don't think you have any arguments.
Okay. Great.
And John, on this, had we done the whole master plan, there would have been three additional fields. But when we all got together, we felt this was the most financially responsible piece to do.
And then I presume we follow up with a lot of the stuff that the Facilities Committee and the strategic plan has been talking about in the future.
The key for this is that it didn't, we didn't do something short-term that would, we would have to redo later on.
Right.
This follows the master plan, so everything we're doing, we're not, we're spending money on something that's going to stay that way.
Right.
That was one of the key considerations.
That's right.
And one of the things that we talked about on our end was also the impact that it's had on our teams. So our teams have not been able to necessarily play on our fields. So we're spending a lot of dollars in transportation because the fields are not, they're not usable at some point. So, I mean, this all makes, this all makes perfect sense.
We more apt to have away games than home games.
Yeah.
And all of this was set up, designed so that we could sponsor state games, state championships here as well.
Right.
That was one of the considerations. So that with these, with the design that we've done here, we would be a very attractive venue for state, state games. All of the specs on the fields are as good or better than other state, state fields.
Absolutely. The second soccer field is maximum size, 120 yards by 75 yards. So we can, we can host regional statewide competitions quite easily. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric Boe. And Eric is going to get into the specifics again of our master plan.
Look at that.
Kind of give you an overview of that, the big plan for the athletic fields, and then this specific Phase One. What do you think is a good place to set up, Patrick?
Right.
Right here?
Where?
You need a hand?
Where we can hear you with a mic.
I know. I kind of like that. It just pops out. So I, you're going to be needing that in a few months.
Yeah.
I think you should check that out.
It's not a walker. What do you mean, I'm going to need it in a few months?
It's got three steps on it. You can't, you know, if it fall with just one.
We have to try.
Stand in the middle of it.
Sorry.
Why don't you have that?
You know what?
Why don't you have that face?
You know what? You can probably put it here.
We have it, we have it here.
So the public can see.
So that the public can see it.
See that we all have the same.
The camera can see it too.
That's why we're a team. We think the same.
No, that's not a good thing.
Turn it so they can--
Let them see it. Dan, you don't need to--
Don't make faces behind the camera.
All right. So the first thing we're going to look at is the master plan. I'll introduce myself. My name is Eric Boe. We work with the Board. Last year, we started working on this master plan. The general idea of a master plan is kind of what Don just got into, which was if you're going to spend money on one particular field, it would be, you'd be foolish not to think through the grand scheme. So to say, all right, maybe this year we want to fix up this soccer field, that's all well and good. We put some money into it, make it really nice. But then, two years from now, we think, oh, man, if only it was 50 feet down, we could have fit a softball field next to it, or something like that. So what the Board asked us to do was to consider the entire site. And so we met with the key players, the coaching staff, Lori, the Board of the Facilities Team, and we came up with a list, a big list of wants and needs to say, all right, if our athletic facilities were going to be the best that we can get out of this property and basically cover all the needs of all our athletic departments and all of our teams, what could we possibly fit in here that's going to work at best? So we went around in circles for quite some time. We came up with a lot of different concepts. And we arrived at this concept that you see here, which maximizes, we feel, the area that we have available to us, and it also takes advantage of falling sports. So that there's as little overlap in sports as you could possibly have, and gives the opportunity to get as much playtime on all these fields as possible. So these are all the fields that we came up with. So then, we come to where we are now, and we said, okay, well, we have, we have a small amount of money. We don't have enough to do the whole shebang, because that would be absurd. But we have a small amount. What can we do? What's going to give us our best bang for the buck? Something that's really going to give us as much playtime and as much community use as we can possibly get out of this initial phase. So what we came up with is this. And these are fields that were on the master plan, we're not violating anything, but we're taking what we have right now and we're doing the best we can with it. So first, I'll talk about the track. Now, the first problem that was noted was the track that we had was a 400-meter track. The trouble was, it was narrow. When you're designing a track, a regulation track can be many different shapes, as long as you get 400 meters around, around the oval. We've actually worked with tracks that are almost square.
We've actually worked with tracks that are almost square. You can really get away with a lot of geometry. But the difference is, what we had before was fairly narrow, which worked five for football, but not so good for soccer. Soccer wants a wider field. Soccer fields are very variable. But in order to get a competition-level soccer field, you really want something that's wider than the old field configuration could have come up with. So add to that, it's only a six-lane track, and we really wanted an eight-lane track. So the first thing we considered was, hey, we can just add a couple lanes to this track, which would have meant moving the visitor bleachers and moving some things around, it would have worked, but we're still stuck with that narrow soccer field. So we considered, hey, if we're going to put all this money into this really nice track, is it worth bumping it out, making it a little wider, making something that's going to give us a soccer field that you guys will be proud of? So the only real detriment were visitor bleachers, and there's some light that we needed to be regular. So it wasn't a huge budget item to go from what you had with an expanded track to what really you're going to want for the maximum use you could serve. So that's what we're showing here, this layout. Now, what we're showing here is the eight-lane track. It's got a steeplechase on the north, it's got the pole vault, and it's got a high jump down here. And these daisels, we call them, which are in the ends of the track, these would be track surface, just like the track. So that can be used for any number of different track events. And then on the inside of the field, we have a free sports line. We have football, we have soccer, which gives you a 75-foot wide field, which is pretty generous for a soccer field. And then lacrosse, always angles of lacrosse. So what we lose by making this field wider, like I said, was the visitor bleachers. So we thought, do we need visitor bleachers? Ultimately, everybody decided it would be good to have visitor bleachers. So if we add a new set of visitor bleachers there and the track itself, it ruins this softball field here. There's no way to, I mean, it's into the clay, so there's no way to make it work like that. So we started thinking, where do we go from there? And then we looked at this plateau up here. And one of the other things that was attractive to the facilities committee and the athletic department was a baseball field that could be used more than what the baseball fields are now. My understanding is, as it is now, a baseball field gets in rain, and it could be, it could be days before anybody's playing on it. So you're traveling to other fields and whatnot. So what we're showing here, we'll do one solution to this. Down here is a, actually up, it's up the next plateau, is a combination baseball, soccer, lacrosse, softball, turf field. Now, a turf field, one of the major advantages to an artificial turf is that you can play on it in the driving rain, and as long as there's no lightning, there's no danger, and it works just fine. There's no puddling, and not to mention, five minutes after the rain's gone, you're good to go. So it completely expands the amount of time that you can play on your facilities. So the, you could play a lacrosse game immediately after, a baseball game immediately after a rainstorm. And that, and that gives you a lot of different opportunities to schedule and overschedule the use of this field. So this could be a combination softball, baseball field, but what we considered was that there is, could be some challenging scheduling conflict between baseball and softball. And because we did lose a softball field, what we considered was, hey, we've got a really nice baseball field up here that you'll probably be playing baseball up here now. For very little cost, we could take this grass-and-play baseball field and convert it to a softball field. And it would actually end up being a very nice softball field. It's got dugout, it's got the backside. So as of now, the, basically, the three phases in this project are this, this, and this minor improvement here. Now, the master plan does not include a softball field in this location. So does this violate everything you just said about a master plan? A little. But keep in mind, it's a very low cost to make this improvement, and we felt that it was necessary for the long-term scheduling, or at least the short-term scheduling until the next phase of the program. Does anybody have any questions?
One of the other things that we also considered with this was special needs, where this field is, right now with the current field, you, the one nice thing is, you can't yell at anyone on the other side of the field because you can't see them because of that pump in the middle of it. But it's not conducive to, you know, other, other sports.
There is a very heavy crown on the existing field, which we're pretty sure just, just because of, we added topsoil many, many, many times to make it a plush grass field. But that's the trouble with a grass field. You get bare spots, you want to add some topsoil to make grass grow again. You do that over a period of 20 years, and you have a three-foot-high pile of topsoil a little bit. Now, not that that couldn't be repaired, but ultimately, a grass field is not designed to be played on every minute of every day. Where I went to high school, I grew up in Maua, the football coach protected the football field, you know, like he was his child. Nobody was allowed to touch it. He manicured it with scissors. But no soccer was ever played on it, no lacrosse was ever played on it. But it was a nice little field. But that's the only way to really have a presentation-level field that you can really be proud of, is to basically never play on it. Whereas with artificial turf, that goes out the window. Now, I do have the, I do have some samples here of the artificial turf going around, so anybody can, I'm going to leave this here, so if everyone wants to play with this later, we have all different colors. They even gave us some purple.
That's an idea.
Does it come with artificial smell for grass? Could you get it to smell like real grass?
I mean, I'm sure we could get some pine stall or something on it.
That'll be your job, Dan.
The key to this whole thing is that everyone needs to know is that both fields and the track complex is basically a track-and-field complex now, where we can hold tournaments throughout the whole New York State if we want, because we'll have the eight lanes and all the other things. So, I mean, right now, I know we have a pretty big track community. We'll be able to do much more on this field.
I would say it's probably the biggest track program I've ever worked with, so unusually large. And this is a very nice track. And one of the things that you have to your benefit here is your track events, your field events, spread around in such a way that it's really conducive to meet. So you can have many, many different things going on at the same time. An ordinary school that doesn't have quite as much land as you, would be squeezing four or five events into these daisels, and people would be running by each other doing the high jump and the pole vault. It's nice that you have the room to spread out there.
One of the other considerations was the length of time that you can play on a field. I think a natural grass field was a maximum of 600 hours a year. And with the artificial turf, it's about 2,500?
I mean, it's, there's no hard or fast rules, but it's definitely somewhere in that ballpark, if unintended. The, like I said, the turf, most artificial turf nowadays is warranty for about 10 years, possibly more, depending on the level of turf that you get and the different options that you have to work with, start adding and whatnot. So you would expect to see somewhere in that, in that 10-year. And then beyond that, what we do is we replace just the rug. So these little carpet samples outside there going around, that's, that's the artificial turf. Now, what goes into that artificial turf is the rubber and sand from infill. So this box right here is actually, I should send this one around. This, this is the most accurate representation of what we're looking at. So while you're sitting at a two-inch or a two-and-a-quarter-inch mat there, once that's infilled with the rubber crumb, which gives you the Gmax, you need for safe falling, really, and shin splints and things like that. I'm not a doctor. I'm a civilian. I'm told this to everybody. So what's, what happens when your, when your rug wears out? And eventually, eventually, the individual fibers there, they get abused over a period of 10 years, and they're going to, they're going to pull apart, and it's going to be less, less functional, less attractive. So at some point, you're not going to get the required safety Gmax rating of the field anymore. And that's really where you have to, the school has to say, listen, it's not, it's not serving its purpose anymore. It needs to be replaced. And that's typically in the 10-year range. So then what happens is, they take, they take a big vacuum, pretty much, and pull out all this rubber infill, and they rip up the old, the old field surface, and usually, they recycle it how it is, and then put it on the roof. So it's a fraction of the original construction cost, because much of what happens around the construction, the sub bases of stone, curves around the grade, that all stays there, and all you're replacing is the, is the turf surface.
And also, on the top, this plateau is going to have lighting also. So you'll be able to play night baseball games and night soccer games and lacrosse up there also.
In what we're looking at now would be an upgrade of the lighting here. I mentioned some of these poles. We had two of these poles we moved back, and all the lighting would be upgraded to LED lighting. And then this field here would be completely lit. So people could play night baseball, softball, lacrosse, and soccer games up there.
As I mentioned earlier, the, the master plan had three additional fields in it. With lighting the second field, it was a, was a very good financial compromise for dealing with the scheduling, so that we didn't have to incur the cost right now of additional fields. We could, we could get more playtime for a fraction of the investment, so that worked out really well.
Based on the approval, what is the expected timeline for completion?
The, I mean, a typical school will build a track-and-field complex like this in the summer. That's, that's very typically done, because that's what most people want to see. They want it to start June 26, and they want it to be ready by September 3. That's entirely feasible. Beyond that, the secondary field, is it possible? Absolutely it's possible, but it's just going to, it's going to be a matter of finding a contractor that can equip that well. So what we've considered, it could be a trade-off. It could be, it could be that you might actually get a better deal financially if you say, all right, this field has to be done by September 1, no ifs, and buts about it, and this one could be done by November if that's the case. It might be better financially because a crew could come and finish one to the other. Or it's possible with a larger, with a larger contractor, and they're out there, but they do them all at once, and you can say, this is, it's all going to be ready by the beginning of school, and that's fine. But as the process unfolds, we'll probably be able to get into a little bit more of the feasibility of doing that all in one summer.
So we're looking at a minimum of one field being ready by September 3?
That would, that would be the goal, yes.
Our original plan was to try to make them both happen, and it's pretty aggressive right now. Like, even tonight, we had to do a quick resolution to clarify this is lead agency. There's a lot of things that, right in construction that can go wrong, but we're pushing hard. Matt Millamow, Eric's colleague, couldn't be here tonight, but we've been working closely with land, and they've been very supportive to try to get this done for fall. I mean, it'd be amazing, actually.
Is weather anything, is weather a factor?
Well, weather's a factor with any construction. I mean, if you have a total washout of a July, then it could obviously delay things. There's only so much they can do in the rain. But typically, like I said, and we've done this many, many times, you give a contractor from June until September, they'll get a field like this done.
The other thing is, in facilities, that football and track complex now is going to be able to play soccer. So at worst case, if the plateau was delayed a couple of weeks before the school started, you'd have a field now that soccer can play, whereas the existing field has a three-foot crown. If you blow on the ball, it blows to the other side of the end zone. Now, it would be an actual field where a soccer game in the fall could be played on there, and football would practice somewhere else maybe, if it conflicted, if this field was a couple days or weeks or behind schedule. So that was another point that the facilities committee, they kind of took into play, that having that multi-field would actually help out everybody, not just one.
One of the things, too, to getting this done by next year was going through, it's called an expedited process at the State End Department. So they now have a, they now have a process where you can pay a little more, and they've outsourced the facilities review, where they have to look at plans and specifications and approve them. They've outsourced it to private architects, and you can, and that's what we're planning on doing, is paying a little more, and it's sort of tiers, in terms of the fees, to get it done quickly.
Time is money. That's probably well spent.
Are we able to, once everything is up and running, and Chris and Don are talking about having state-run stuff here? I know that when we attend these functions at Newburgh, Middletown, we're paying a fee at the door. Is that something that we would then be looking to do as well?
It's possible.
Okay.
Should be a conversation the board should have.
Yeah. Because, I mean, again, when we go to those events, football, soccer, we're paying to get in. So parking, yeah.
But I believe that's state games.
Right. That's what I just said.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Right. I said, no, I'm sorry, for the, for the state ones that we're looking to hold.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
They got three years in the pile, so they, they're set, we can get back to home, so.
Okay.
I think that the fee is actually established by?
The state.
Section nine and state.
Anything else?
This is good stuff.
Yeah. I mean, thank you very much, and I know that we've been working on, on the master plan for quite some time, and there's been certainly a need. I mean, people have been screaming about the, a lot of the facilities for quite a while, so I, my reaction is, it's about time, let's go.
Well, and I think the other thing is, the school district has been extremely financially responsible over the last few years. So it's allowed us to, you know, conserve money and have it for projects like this.
Yeah, that's great.
I think a lot of the cost savings and things like that are paying off in not raising the taxes and being able to do projects like this.
Yeah. No, we're in a good place.
Yeah.
So I will leave those samples, just, just so you know, that's, that's one of many different brands of turf. I'm not a salesman for the turf. This, this, this company happened to give me samples for your project, so it's, when, when the time comes in, in design, we'll weigh all the different options for that, and things like the track surfacing, which there's a hundred different things you can put on your track. But when the time comes, we'll, we'll help you think through that, and the best one, they're basically the best way to get your best bang for your buck.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
I'll leave this.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so I would ask for the items under the business financial section, the agenda, to be approved. We have our standard monthly reports for April. We have two donations, an educational grant from Origin Rockland for middle school for technology at the technology department, and a donation of a King Tempo Model 301 trumpet for a music program from Chris Verdi-Arenzo. Thank you. For those donations, we have contracts, we have nine contracts, one of which is just a revision with the youth activity camp. We approved that previously for five buses. They did seven buses. We have a renewal of our contract with Poly Bus for non-public transportation for next year, or this year, I should say, the 18, 19 school year. And we have agreement with Ingraham Smith and a series of related services contracts as well. And finally, the SEAKER resolution that I discussed, declaring the school district as lead agency, and considering it's a type-one action, which means it requires a little bit more and a little deeper environmental analysis, considering the entire master plan in that analysis. And that's the appropriate way to handle that, otherwise we could be accused of, it's called segmentation, where we're only considering a piece of what we ultimately want to do as a bigger project. We have to consider the entire master plan, as Eric discussed it in the seat.
Meaning the master plan of that, of the campus there?
Correct.
Right. Not like anything we might be doing at Pine Tree or this or that later.
Just that campus, the athletic field master plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements on the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, reports by board and central office. Do we have anything? Chris? We just basically did it. And we did that. Nothing on the policies? We're going to start.
Policy, we have a meeting the 27th?